All right, this meeting is called to order.
McGreen, here. Winska, here. Knight, absent. Mackey.
Present.
Bassett, here. Thank you.
We'll entertain a group of the agenda as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance twenty-four C from the agenda.
That's on the consent agenda.
Oh, also that wouldn't be on this.
No, that would be when they.
Okay.
Make a motion for consent agenda.
I'll do it then.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those say nay. Let's have it. All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. Declare the public hearing to be open. For the amendment, approve the resolution number twenty-four dash zero six, resolution to approve and amending the FY twenty-four budgets.
If there's any public that has any comments.
Do you have to close it before we vote?
Yep.
Can I make a motion to vote?
We gotta close it.
I do look to close it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Now open the floor up to public comments or any public comments. Hearing done, will close public comments. Moving on to the consent agenda.
So I can make a motion. I make a motion to pull twenty-four C ordinance regarding water fees for vacant properties. Anybody want a second?
Well, yeah, it's under business items. But that's right, she can make a motion because it's still the. Oh, no, you're right.
Yeah, it's our business items.
Okay.
So we'll just entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Down here, okay. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those will call, sorry, those will call.
McGreen motion, then Mackey second. Um, McGreen, yes. Winska?
Yes.
Knight is absent, Mackey?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to business items, presentation by Karen Sees.
Sophie. Sophie.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, first of all, let me apologize for last meeting. Got the time wrong, I showed up at seven and nobody was here. It's all right. Um, Karen Sophie, Story County Community Foundation's executive director. You have some information in front of you, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm not sure that anybody's come down from this organization, you served on the board eight years way back and then. But I wanted to talk about what we offer, we do house endowments for nonprofit organizations and, and individuals who have philanthropic bent. Um, but we also do grants. And that's going to be specific toward the community here, whether it be a nonprofit or municipal entity. So your fire and rescue. And other public offices, so. You have a list in front of you, not just our introduction, but toward the back, you're going to see the list of the grants the last four years. Next year will be our twentieth year in operation. Where we get money from the grants is gaming proceeds, state of Iowa, so anyone who goes to the casino, since Story County does not have a casino, we get a profit share. Point eight percent. But we are only to do that, distribute that in community betterment breaks. I think you were saying that the last probably big grant was twenty-five thousand.
To the fire station.
To the fire station a few years back.
Yeah, for the new addition.
Yep.
Yep, yep, so. We want to see you to apply.
Would an electronic sign be something you could apply for or not?
I'm not saying you can't apply for it, I just don't know, in the scheme of things, with forty, fifty other grants, what's going to splash out.
If we have, can we apply for a small grant as well as a bigger grant?
It's up to twenty-five thousand, but we have, we have zero to, to ten thousand is our community grants, ten to twenty-five is the major grants.
So we apply for both?
You can apply for whatever amount. You can apply for several grants, if you have a grant that's nine thousand dollars and you have one with twenty-five thousand, apply for both.
Okay.
So. So think about what you can do. We're always, we want to spread it around, what you're going to see in your, your, what you're going to see is that Maxwell got three last year. But we tried to spread it around throughout the communities.
I know Collins got several for their park areas.
Correct. Correct, park betterment, now you're, you got something going on at the park, we don't do events per se.
Okay.
But anything, bathroom.
We're looking at that and we're looking at, we're cooking up some stuff with, so we bring our community, so people that are community and their property owners.
Right, and so something like that would definitely work into it, we've had several, you know, deratio trees. Uh, replanting trees if they've fallen and, and you need to do some replanting, so there's. I don't have to tell you what your community needs.
Did you say it would cover for deratio trees to be removed?
You can apply, like I said, I don't know how, like I, how sexy it is, I don't know.
Right.
But you can apply, apply.
Do you have a point system that they?
No, there, there's a, there's a committee and they got a scale.
Okay.
But like I said, they, they, first of all, I know they take into consideration once last time you applied.
Oh, okay.
You know, we, we want, like I said, I spread it around. So, you know, we don't, we're not, we are located in Anamis. But we are Story County. Now we get Zearing and it's some, all of them.
Yes.
So I encourage you to apply in those, and like I said, if anyone, you know, a farmer that. We do, we handle farm equipment sales, so, you know, if you do start your, your fund and.
For the historical.
We handle, we handle stock, livestock, farmland, we can.
Oh, really?
We can handle all of that dis- dispersal.
That's impressive.
That's because we're an affiliate of the Granger Memorial Foundation.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And they, as an umbrella, but they can handle all those types of asset transfers. So.
Is it year round to make applications?
Applications are due September sixteenth.
It's a larger grants earlier, right?
There's no letter of intent this year.
Oh, okay.
So September sixteenth is the deadline.
Okay.
For all of our, for all of the grants. You can start making applications, I would say June first is usually when people really start digging in, so really get the. Ideas.
The actual application is available on your website?
Correct.
Okay.
And it is an online website, we're working on. My latest thing, we're switching websites for all this, I'm working on the website, but if there's any questions, just give me a, I'll give you the grant application, either in Word or PDF format.
Okay, right on. Thank you.
You're very welcome, I, we try to make it, we try to.
Sure.
Yes. I don't want to take up too much of your time, so if you have any questions.
Then you'll be getting a lot of applications.
Well, we like applications, too few is, is not good.
No.
And, and, you know, we don't like seeing, we don't like repeats, so like I said, I encourage you, I know Kelly is looking at some deratio cleanup yet. Zearing has a physician's assistant, well, they, that they're looking to expand the clinic, so there's competition.
Oh, no.
So put your best ideas forward, but go on, do it. You guys have any thoughts?
I'm good.
You're good?
What's Freddie Equipment?
Freddie is, Fire Department's Freddie is, they have a robotic fire engine that they named Freddie. And it goes around, they go around to schools and they teach fires with the Freddie. And what they did with the old Freddie, I don't know what they did with the old Freddie, the old Freddie was hanging on glass wheels. But. But hey, they had to buy a new Freddy's. So.
Cool.
They'll go around all your schools.
Yeah, very informative.
Yeah. And there's all sorts of stuff. Yeah, like I said, you have my card, you have my name number, you want to come up sometime with your names and talk some things over.
What was your office at?
We are in the tile office building.
Oh, you live there, okay.
Yeah, uh, we are there, we are not going to be moving anytime soon. We're right next to Stifel, they're on Grand Avenue.
Because you used to be in the museum.
We used to be there and then used to be in the research park and the research park bouncing around three different locations within the research park in eight months. And then they finally found someone to help, so.
Good.
I thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, right up above your computer, Barb's.
Oh, it's over there.
All right, moving on to item B, approval merger of the fire and library bank accounts into cities general checking accounts.
So would those accounts be considered department accounts within the city of Cambridge?
No.
No.
It goes into the cities.
But it's a department account.
Where all the funds go in and that's how you base your budget.
Yeah.
Is what's coming in, what's allocated, yeah, it's to help pay for everything that funds either the fire station or the library, correct.
So what do you need from us?
I need an entertaining motion to prove.
To approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call, call.
Get some help, voice vote.
They both, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say nay.
Good.
All right, moving on to item C, approval of special class C retail alcohol license for cloud wine for Cambridge Jubilee Day celebration.
Do we know anything about this vendor?
Yeah, she's been in Maxwell, um, and she was going to be at the vendor fair that they had here, but she didn't get her license applied for soon enough.
This case, that's where I'm breaking.
Adam, Adam said he's had her wine and it's amazing, so.
Yeah.
Have we had any? Events had any problems with her providing services? Okay.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Uh, next item D, set a date for a work session with Bill Goldie on goal setting.
Okay, we don't need to set a date, this is, this would be July or August. I was talking to him about, I asked him how other cities keep track of everything and communicate what's going on and. Most cities have a city administrator and he said he would be willing to work with us on how to do that, how to keep a strategic list, maybe in July or August, so that's all.
Does that require a work session or can he just come and meet just to go over stuff like your development group comes in and?
He wanted to do a Zoom session and do like a consulting thing.
Okay, so it doesn't require then a work session or a council meeting?
Whatever you want to do, whatever's legal, I don't know.
Well, work session requires your council members to be there, if you just do a session.
We could do that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be till July or August and he charges for this, so he likes seventy-five dollars for an hour.
Does he think it will only last an hour?
No, he said seventy-five dollars an hour, so I don't know, he's going to send up a proposal, so.
Okay.
We don't need to do anything with this right now.
So not till July or August?
Right.
Would, uh, would Rick Picklat be able to help us some on this since he's involved with all the other communities around?
Yeah, I could tell him who needs to attend.
We're just getting ready.
Well, I think Bill's done more of this city administrative stuff, I don't think Greg's done that kind of stuff, but we can talk about it. Oh, that's great.
All right, moving on to item E.
This is bulk water. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four B. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's an ordinance change or requires some. Yep, will call. Um, McGreen?
Yes.
Winska?
Yes.
Knight? Absent. Mackey?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
And actually, since it's an ordinance change, this is our first reading. So then like you guys can choose if you want to waive the second and third or have a second. Meeting, then do a second reading, that's up to you guys.
I'd like motion to waive the other meetings.
Second. Wave. So motion by Bassett. And. Second by Mackey. Just two roll call because I'm not sure on this one, McGreen?
Yes.
Winska?
Yes.
Knight is absent. Mackey?
Yep.
And Bassett?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash C by amending the code ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to temporary vacancies.
Now I want to make a motion to pull this ordinance from the agenda.
What do you want to do with it?
No.
You want to table it? Or what do you want to do with it?
I want to, I think it needs to be reworded and.
So that can be tabled and it, so that it comes back up in the next meeting?
Do you want to put a date on that next meeting?
So what you can do now is you ask where to be tabled.
Right.
Then you have a discussion, we can go right into a discussion, the one we would be interested in doing, so we know if we need to modify it, um, what everybody's hopes to do.
I make a motion to table it.
Everyone to put a time on it?
I don't know, has anybody seconded?
No, I'll second.
Yeah, table to the next month, next month's, uh, meeting.
Sure.
Yes, you're, you're one council member short tonight, so.
But do, do you want to have any discussion at all on why we're tabling it, what we want different, so that everybody has an idea going in?
So you want me to say, right, I want to table it or start the discussion?
Yeah, just to say, I would like to table it because I have some.
And I have some concerns with this because it doesn't address, uh, ordinance, it doesn't address shut off issues on properties, abandoned properties or vacant rental properties and. Those are my concerns, also, when I shut off my electricity, I don't get charged for just sitting there without electricity, so that's an analogy that I. If you have water and shut it off. I don't know why you would get charged because the, you maintain up to the road or wherever you shut it off. So I think we should make the shut off or the reconnect fees higher. Instead of.
So the, the temporary vacancy does not apply to disconnect people for non-useful, non-payment of their bill, this is a temporary vacancy, somebody leaves.
But it's okay, rented properties, it would apply to that.
It would apply to rental properties, correct.
And how long is temporary, if I leave a house for three years?
Right, that's a section of the ordinance we need to clean up.
Yeah, yeah, when you figure out what is a temporary, is there, it has to be so much time because, uh, you know, thirty days shouldn't be considered a temporary vacancy.
Right.
They need to be gone for an extended period of time.
Right.
What is that time? Sixteen, ninety, hundred eighty?
You're, three years. I'm going to do some research, sometimes they don't allow that at all, they, you pay that service fee because this, the city maintains the lines throughout the town year round. And that's, that's a lion energy and I don't get charged when I shut off my electricity.
But they're a utility to the city though, they're, they're, but they're a private utility, you're not.
I think the service fee should be charged all year. You know, like, you're making the choice to leave and you can shut off certain things, but we still have to maintain them, there are still cracks and stuff that could potentially happen.
But up to the road is what you maintain, if it breaks from the shut off to my house, the city doesn't have any responsibility on that.
Right, but it's when you leave for vacation and come back four months later, uh, it's, to be able to just turn a valve and have water right now.
That's where we should have a higher charge, higher charge for that, return on fees, but that's. So that's. That's my question.
What type of a fee would you look at for the shut off and then the turn back on?
I don't know what we have right now.
There, there is the only one, there's waters disconnected for non-payment, we don't have a fee.
For temporary.
For temporary, they just say they're going to be gone and we make it inactive.
And that's where we should have a fee.
The only, the only problem is, I think it needs to have something in their wording that it has to be shut off at the curb, you can't leave the water on because if you're gone and they have a watering. In your home, but it has to be shut off at the curb.
Right.
And have you done that for all the snowbirds that when they leave, no. So that would be another thing.
So then you wouldn't have to define temporary, so there's a shut off fee and a connect fee.
But that's why we need, then we have to decide what kind of a fee are we talking?
Right, right. So do you want me to do some research into what other cities charge?
I just, I wouldn't. I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of an increase to turn on fees because Joe Tedpek gets it turned on, he didn't plan on leaving or going anywhere, why should he pay more to have his water turned on?
But did he shut it off?
Well, he just started renting here, he bought a home here.
Oh, maybe that's a different.
Well, yeah, but you, but, ma- and maybe I misunderstood you, but you had mentioned, you know, increase the turn on fee.
If you're leaving.
So there's, yeah. I didn't hear that.
For temporary vacancies.
I just wanted to, I wanted to be, yeah.
So what's the charge to get a connection for new people?
For water and sewer hookups, hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
I think there should be a timeline in there because then where, where do you build from abandonment, they've been gone for eight to nine months and we're abandoned now and just let it sit there?
But, yeah, and I think it also encourages so you don't have empty buildings sitting around.
See, I think the whole ordinance is faulty right now, we don't even, I don't.
Kind of vague.
Yeah, I don't think we need to move forward with it because it's too vague.
I think we need to work on.
Okay. Okay.
Be more specific with it.
I think there needs to be some timelines on how long is considered a temporary vacancy.
Yeah.
You know, a minimum of three, four months.
And what's the minimum, what would the minimum be?
Or just do it, just do six months max and.
If you're gone for six months, you can be a temporary.
Correct.
There is, so that's what you're saying, if you allow that, they have to be gone, there has to be a person that's gone for six months.
Right.
Then that's considered a temporary vacancy, anything underneath that?
But what would their payment be per month if they're six months, they're gone?
They wouldn't, that's where you're saying, not have to charge them anyway.
Right.
I think they shouldn't have a, a turn off fee for the public works guys to have to go shut the water off at the, shut off valve at the street. They wouldn't have to worry about something leaking into the house for four months while they're gone.
Is there a concern? I guess most people leave during the winter, if you're going to leave.
Right.
That by just turning water off to the house that.
That's what we did, we just shut them off now.
That when we turn it back on, then all of a sudden, because over winter, you know, like this winter, we had a mild winter, no issues. But, but my first winter, it was miserably cold and so now we have, and maybe, I don't know, and so that's why I'm asking, is there a concern then by just allowing people just to turn water off for six months at the curb? Not even just like money for the city, you know, concern, but just turning water off. Well, and in the street, now we're going to have potential issues with lines and when Dale or Adam turn it back on, now we find cracks and stuff.
Well, that'd be hopeless.
That's still your problem, you're the homeowner.
Well, my also concern is a lot of your revenue bonds are based on what a person pays a month, that's where you come up with that service fee, because you have your bonds that you're paying and now if you are letting people not be here, not bringing in that revenue to pay those bond fees.
But how many people are there that leave? Ten? Ten people?
Probably less than ten.
Five?
Ten, but that's three hundred dollars a month.
You're charging them three hundred a month?
No, that, ten people, it's, it's twenty-two dollars for sewer service. And fourteen dollars for.
Four months is twelve hundred dollars.
Forgot for four months, if it's three hundred, yeah.
I don't know, I struggle with just not charging them anything, I was gone for two and a half weeks and I still had to pay sewer and stuff, like.
Well, it's just the maintenance of the line, everybody else is paid for that line, that's, you're coming back to and having the convenience of turning the valve on and it's, it's there, it's working, instant.
You're not paying any water use fee, you're just paying the service fee that maintains line.
I'm not paying for that, I guess I don't, I don't know.
That's a city utility though.
Well, that's a, they're a.
It's a private utility.
So why is that different?
It's a different company.
Because it's taxpayer dollars.
Right, here, and twelve hundred dollars. Well, so will I, but I think it should be in his work to turn on or the public works, I don't know.
Yeah, it is. But we're just saying while they're gone, while people are gone.
How much would it be, forty dollars a month when they're gone?
It's thirty-six.
Thirty-six dollars a month just to help maintain it. In my opinion, then you shouldn't be traveling. I mean, it's part of being a homeowner and stuff, like there's certain things, like if you rent a house, you know, like there's certain things that the homeowner takes care of.
Right.
It's the cost of doing business, so. And thirty-six dollars a month, I mean.
And what's temporary then?
Right, that's the thing.
And if we have a fee for turn off and turn off, the temporary, then we have that, it doesn't matter how long you go.
I would say, I mean, I know we're not booking and stuff tonight, but if we're allowing them, my opinion, to turn on, turn off, then that fee needs to be insanely high to cover the thirty-six dollars a month fee.
So it could be seventy-two to turn off and seventy-two to turn on.
And just.
And we don't have to figure what temporary is. Susan didn't want to say it, well, it's a temporary.
So, yeah. We definitely need to.
Is that how they're.
Because somebody's temporary could be very different than somebody else's.
So three months, anyway.
What, what, what would you do with an E-five and a guard who gets deployed?
There's another situation.
Is his family still there though?
Maybe, I don't even know.
I think that's one of like my situation, you could be single.
Is there a way, is there a way that you, each person that's bringing in front of the council for a.
I would think you could maybe like, we could approve a special condition.
Yeah, special condition, that's what I would say.
So you say that, Mike, so what now if they were a veteran, does it go that same way?
No, because they're.
It's not active.
They're, they're, they're. They're, 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 they're leaving home. It's a choice that they're making. Deployment is not a choice. Deployment is an order.
Right. Wow. So I think instead of a monthly fee, we could put it in the turn off and turn on. So it'd be, we did seventy dollars for turning it off, he's seventy dollars for turning it on. That'd be the same amount of income.
Hundred and forty, basically what they're gonna pay just to pay their maintenance.
But then if, we don't have to define temporary.
I'm going to close the discussion and, and look to bring a little more solid detail the next time we get together.
Seventy-seven?
I do.
She'll be seven. We have to close it.
Oh, okay.
She motions to table it. No, it's just a discussion. It's all underneath this. You just move on. They tabled it.
We're gonna table it to a date then?
Anytime to stop table it and then they ask for it to be back on the agenda again is when you bring it back off. The table.
Have you table it to a point though, to a day?
No, not necessarily. I, I did a lot of the Huxley's minutes and they had a, a. An item on the agenda they tabled in, they didn't bring it back for like four months.
So do we wait and attach it to another work session if we have?
That's what, yeah, I would say probably as a work session where more information can be gathered and.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
You gonna make a note of that?
Yeah. To a work session.
All right, any further discussion of that? Moving on to G, the discussion motion to approve the proposal. Of base point building automation and or wall door and security for the install the handicap doors at the Cambridge Community. Center entrance. So I just.
How much is the grant for again?
Ninety dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we use that money, the leftover money for other stuff? Or does it go back? Right, but you can use that.
Yeah, because I've been in other, I've been in other things for. To. When there's five of them, they need to help.
Do we need to consider the expense of the electrical contractor? We don't have a bid yet.
And then, oh, yeah.
Okay, so this is just for install, but then there was tables.
And when we were discussing this earlier, was it your sense that the base point guy seemed to know his business and business way around in regard to putting the door in and. Understanding what the code was, especially being ADA compliant.
Yes, so they, Dale and I.
They discuss and decide which one they wear out there and then they vote on to approve.
And do we have a? Do we have a history with walls, door and security?
What's that?
Do we have a history with walls, door and security?
I know they have it on.
Wasn't a good experience.
I did not.
It wasn't a good experience.
No. But that would be more of you than us. I don't have to say that one.
So.
I haven't, I'm just discussing.
Okay.
I don't.
I make a motion to approve base point building.
Second.
Okay, now move on to for discussion.
We just discussed it.
Kind of did that backwards, but.
Well, I wasn't.
So did you already talk about all this then?
Yep.
Good.
There, she's got, she's, they have to get another bid for.
Yep, yep. But are we looking to prove this one before May thirty-first? The lower one?
Would you, would you rather us wait and approve both the electrical and the door installation at the same time?
Get it done before.
May thirty-first is the middle.
Yeah, to accept that good.
And it's, yeah.
So the other one to discuss is. To get it installed and then the electrician can come here and see it and give you a bid.
Okay.
Correct. Okay.
But yeah, I'm all for approving that bid and getting him in here to make the installation, so. Lightning bolt will come in and figure out how to plug the power.
All right. And then do we need two bids again for electrical?
Probably, you got two, put it in.
It will be, but I did have at least two to compare, yeah.
Never.
No, I totally did a motion to approve.
Yep.
Yep, this freshman, um.
We made the most of that, excited, okay.
All in favor for the approval of.
Base point.
Base point building automations, say aye.
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 All close, say ayes.
Is there, uh, yeah, I was just saying, uh, maybe.
Okay. Yep. That's fine.
Just call them and tell them it's been approved?
Well, it looks like there's something inside on the second page.
Yeah. I'm sure they'll have to, but they didn't say how soon they'd be able to get it going.
They made it sound like.
Anytime, since the approval.
Yeah, for, yeah, that's, that's how I understood, yeah.
Thanks again for doing that. That's gonna be a huge amendment to the communities.
Lord, you know, was that both doors? So it'll open both doors off?
It's just one button and it opens both of the entrance doors or is it two downward buttons?
Sounds like there's two out, two in or two outside, two in. Okay.
To make it. But nothing to open up the library door?
No.
Into the library.
Okay.
Okay.
It's does those two front doors.
I'll get another gram. Start down.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to discussion items. We have the ICAP hail damage repairs update.
So I got another email. And I keep this like the fourth one and each time we bring this up, we. Don't have anything. They're asking for a report on where we're at on any of our hail damage repair. They broke on the opera house. Um, and a couple other buildings that were reported.
What else do you have for other buildings?
I think, I think it was the water plant.
Right over here.
Yeah. I don't know if the old city hall was on there. It seemed like there was three or four.
I don't think the old city hall was. I don't think the old city hall was. Was it just the window and the tin work on the side of that small building? We're gonna do something with that? We're using that to, to take out that window that was all broken on it.
Oh, yeah, we'll just. Get that.
But I think most of it was the resealing of that opera house.
And you took that flyer of that, that. Hail and I had a company that does it.
So you found another company?
I have a guy, he was actually working on hill, the, the, the exact same thing.
So we just need to call him and have to get a quote.
Right, right, so go ahead and take their. So we're supposed to get that.
Yep, Dale wants to call him, but.
Do you have, still copy or do you need that flyer back? Oh, I, I regret. Okay. Okay, so.
Did you see Phil's, did you see Phil's, uh, roof after he did it?
I did not.
No.
Look at it.
Okay.
So. So it was the opera house. And maybe the water plant? I think one of the water plant. I can pull it up. It'll, if she has a list, then we can look it over, um, and see if. What we want, wanna report. I, one of the roasts, I thought you guys said that you weren't gonna do anything with it.
So the opera house, the opera house deal there is, you know, you know well, that the company that did it, Proseal. As soon as somebody else touches it, they're gonna be free of that then. They'll be totally free of it. So I, I think that's the reason why we held off on for a while.
Shouldn't our attorney, didn't have, how about the, the warranty?
It did come with a warrant.
So shouldn't our attorney be reaching out to their company saying they warranted this and we asked them to come back?
We don't have an attorney.
I said, how's that work? We do, we do, you still have an attorney.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe I'll reach out to. Come.
Yeah, let's just go to take, uh. The contractor.
Company is asking for this and we can't get them to answer us, so if he can light a fire somewhere. It's for us to get this, she was in the room.
I think we should just go with the other vendor. I think we should just go with the other vendor. See what he says.
See what he says.
All right, is there any further discussion with the ICAP? Moving on to debris management planning for local officials.
I think I included that in the back of you guys' packet. There was, um, it's just a. Like thing about debris management planning for cities of case there was ever a, you know, a big.
So do Adam and Dale wanna go to that?
Look where it's at. I don't think we can send both our public works guys to be gone on the same.
Maybe they won one. I mean, it's not gonna do any good for me to go and try to tell people what to do.
No, I think it's more of getting the, like, probably like a, a committee of people to. Together that would be in charge to, well, what is the plan if it happens? Where could your residents go if they don't, you know, have power or? You know, food or?
So the mayor.
I thought that was part of the EOC of thirties. Or nineties, maybe.
Emergency.
Yeah, that was kind of their plan.
Is that what it is? But that came to all the cities for, you know, for in your own local town if something happens. Where is it at Harvard?
Estoril.
How far away is Esther?
It's three hours, three hours.
South Dakota.
Like heaven.
Nobody wants to go to South Dakota. Maybe we can.
Say.
Maybe we can see if. They're gonna be having one any closer, so we don't have to travel three hours for, I, I think it's all vague though, isn't it?
Yeah, maybe at four thirty.
So you'd have to, is it one day or two days?
It does say you can request for them to pay for lodging.
Like you're have, yeah, they can pay for life. I saw it somewhere too, they can get.
It said. For lodging reimbursement if you travel in excess of fifty miles.
Yeah, did it cost you a payment?
Roy and I don't know.
You better clear that with the boss first before you go. You're.
I think, do you think Dale and, yes, would it do any good for you guys to go? No, that's a lot of times. Plus a lot.
It just came in an email, so I'm trying to make sure I get this information now, okay, because it's coming up.
Right.
In July.
I think it would be good, but hopefully that's something closer.
Right.
Well, they surely gotta have another one somewhere else.
Yeah, it's three days.
Right, it's three days.
I'm, I'm guessing it's probably for your, more here for your bigger cities, but I don't know, I've never.
Anyway. Thank you for sharing that.
Moving on to the annual examination of the FY twenty-four.
Yeah. So there's also a copy of the letter, um, that we've been notified that we will also have to have an audit for. This current year, fiscal year twenty-four, and it says we have to put in if we're gonna use the state for it. Or if we are going to do an RFP, which we did last year and we're doing this year. Um, but yeah, this form I have to fill out. So that's why I put it in front of the council to, uh, we plan on hiring a financial audit. So. This I wasn't understanding. We are having a financial audit in lieu of an annual examination. What does that mean? Yeah, well, that's, I've never had that brought to us before. It just says you're up for an audit. And you can either have the state or you can go out for an RFP.
Yeah, this is just us planning on doing it for else, we're gonna take it upon ourselves and do our own.
But it says we will be contacting a private CPA firm. That's that choice, but this one says we're planning on having a financial audit. Instead of an annual examination. Hmm, should I reach out to another city and ask them? What that actually means?
Because I mean, maybe it's not as intensive. You know, might save us some money if it's more like an overview because we've passed.
Required to have an annual examination. We plan to have a financial audit instead of the annual, instead of the annual examination that the.
That's. State does. Be that one really in-depth, like looking at everything and then one is more overview.
The financial audit, that's what I think too.
That's what.
Name a firm that we're gonna use the same one that we did just the last two years.
Yeah, that would work.
But isn't the company we use a CPA firm?
I would imagine so.
So that's why there's, that's included in both those choices.
And we found out that. Hiring someone ourselves is less expensive than going through the state.
Oh, absolutely. Almost half price.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's great.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll just check them, but it was due by May thirty-first, so.
Check which one.
It was half and they even gave us recommendations on it, but the company we use last year, they're really good.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, he was really good.
I would just use the same company.
Okay.
Moving on to nuisance abatement conference, May twenty-third, Simpson College in Indiana, Iowa.
So.
Who hasn't?
Barb and Michelle and I have already been to that, so I didn't know if any of us. Who's kind of working on our nuisance abatement?
Uh, Dave was.
That's why I was wondering if maybe Dave would want to attend that. Dave is home. Yeah, he's home.
When except May twenty-third, then we. Depends how he feels.
He says, says he's doing really well, so.
I saw him out, yeah.
So maybe I'll reach out to Dave and ask him if he's interested in going to that since he missed this meeting.
All right. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's so good. Um, I shall, I have the notes still.
Second N L A. Conference that they had, but didn't they have nuisance abatement?
And it didn't the first one.
It did the first one or the second?
You know, I.
That was the second. The first one was just, just what you're doing, disorder and stuff. It's the second one.
I know it had a lot of, it really didn't, no, not in the second. I'm pretty sure, I could be wrong, but. Oh, would you stay for two?
Yeah, for two.
Yeah, it might be.
Didn't Dave build that already?
Part two, he did, but this is a much more extensive, this is very detailed one. This is specifically just on nuisance abatement and how you can, um. Do different things to manage different types of nuisances.
Is there anybody else interested in going?
When is it again?
May twenty-third.
School's not out yet.
Interested, but I can't.
Is it all day?
Yeah, it's all day. Eighty-two. Twenty-third of Thursday. I'll reach out to Dave. See if he's interested at all.
True. Doesn't it cost, it was like seventy-five dollars or something?
Nuisance abatement's eighty dollars and. May twenty-third, Simpson College in Indiana, Iowa, just the one day, eighty dollars.
Okay, is there any further discussion on nuisance abatement conference? Moving on to staff wages increase.
And I gave everyone a printout, um, Maxine, we had our work session. Uh, there, the discussion of was three percent. Um, and then the discussion with, um. Randy in the cemetery mowing and we included that in there, so it was just something for you guys. That's featured the figures. That we had plugged into the budget.
That's three percent.
Name for three percent across, yep. Three percent were. Dale, Adam, myself. The. Um. The assistant clerk, we didn't increase that any because right now we have kind of lost our assistant clerk, so we didn't change that at all. We didn't change that at all, we'll probably rehire, um, Lori, we did her wage increase earlier. Um, and then Alyssa gave her notice at the library also, so we didn't move that one up. And then we moved, uh, Randy's for small little cemetery.
I proposed this before, and I'm okay doing just three percent this year, but. My suggestion, what I really like is taking kind of the philosophy of what Ames does is like department heads. Everybody, everybody in the city, whether it's part time or, you know, no matter what, you get a three percent cost of living, um, raise. But then what I really liked in Ames was for the department heads who have kind of that bigger responsibility and, you know, they. Or salaries or they're not getting overtime, is that there's a performance review every April. And you could, based on your performance for the previous year, can get up to five percent. And so I think.
In addition to the three percent cost of living.
So you get for sure three, but say like, you just had a like amazing year. Then you could get like four point five percent or four point.
Not on top of the three.
Not on top of the three, but the math.
Not to exceed five.
Not exceed five, but it, and it's just the department heads, and so because they just have that bigger responsibility, uh. And I like it, it's performance based, and so, but you, you get three percent just every year, that's cost of living. But I do think, I mean, especially knowing like what Susan and Dale and Lori put into the library. I think giving them that opportunity to get a little more money is beneficial, so. I, we're too late in the game this year, but I do wanna propose that for the next year, I think it's important. Um, again, take care of your people and so, um. Ames does it, I don't know if anybody else does it, but it worked really well in Ames and. You, performance reviews, I think, should just be in general, every person, but more and more for our department heads. So just wanted to throw that out there with the pay raises going forward. But yeah, three percent should be minimum for everybody. So, do we have to refer that?
Exactly, it was just discussion for, for me to give you the sheets of where it would be at, and then I'll put it on June's. Agenda for the approval of that, um, then we'll have the motion and second.
Okay.
Moving on, sorry for the. Record is an hour tonight for the guys. I thought you were gonna leave.
I don't know, since we've had much shorter agendas, it's been way past now, so.
Right.
We're moving tonight.
All right, we start with library.
Um, well, we, um, just found out that we are accredited another three years, so I'm excited about that, so. We are at the highest tier level, number three again, until two thousand twenty seven. You have to go through the accreditation process every three years, so. Um, that is wonderful and that helps with the funding and, um, just recognition, obviously, for the library. Um, one of the grant requirements was to have a community conversation about how the grant money should be spent. Um, and so we had fourteen residents attend the meeting. Uh, four of which have physical disabilities. And it was a great meeting, Barb was there too, so it was nice to really nice. Council there too, um, many ideas and suggestions were given, everyone there was very happy and excited about. Um, the handicap doors coming in. And they said not only, you know, obviously to get into the library, but to come to vote. You know, to come into the community center, um. We also, uh, have a great summer program planned. Um, it will begin with the open house on Saturday, June eighth, Jubilee Celebration. Um, just like last year, um, we had the library open a little bit longer after the parade and then, um. I have Texas Roadhouse coming in again to do prizes and things like that, and that was the big hit. Uh, as Susan mentioned, Alyssa just sent, but entered to make notice, so, um, yes, I will be hiring. Um, so I know there was talk about doing a high school student too. So I guess I kind of went in, I, I cannot have high school student on the, on a Saturday, they could not get along. Um, it's not legal, so, um. So an idea was maybe I thought we, like, library and I, or talked about maybe having. High schooler help with Tuesdays and Wednesdays with the big program, cause I tend to have seventy five, eighty people come on a Tuesday during the summer. And at least thirty five to forty on a Wednesday. And then maybe have someone on Saturday and then they could take over the hours after. High schooler couldn't, that was one idea. I do have a couple of people interested, which is huge, because I don't always have someone interested. We also, uh, added five new patrons in April, each month we're getting more and more of an Alcar, so I'm very happy about that. Um, I would like to meet with their new city planner and to see what else we can do to promote. Our library, Alcar feel even more welcome. Um, our door count this month in April was two hundred and seventy six. We had seventeen programs with a hundred and fifty seven participants attending, so. Um, we definitely had people coming in libraries, so I'm very happy about that.
So with, with you being full time now, have you thought about, you thought about doing different hours now? Like a weekend or any, or later in the evening?
We, I don't have all that settled yet on the board, but yes. I mean, kind of surveying some people too, see what, we'll definitely open on a Thursday, it's obviously since we're not open down on Thursday. Um, but, yes.
If you put it out there for question on, on, uh, maybe like suggestions on, on, to the community on what hours might work?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna put that on, like a Facebook survey too, and then I, I started doing when people come in the library and just kind of writing down their comments too. Oh, and Barbara just sent you, I just, so we'll be working on the next.
Newsletter?
Yeah, I just sent that to you today.
Yeah, I saw that, thank you. We'll get that out.
Any further questions or discussion for library? Now, let's move it on the fire. See Matt here, do you know anything?
Got four people that are winding up, or winding down on pretty empty, they're getting right to the end of it, so. I think the last ones finished the right time. And quick, cause they're just waiting for the test, which is very soon, so. Sounds like all four of them are doing very well. So we'll have organs hopefully, so.
All units.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to police, is there anything extra, Joe, you have a?
No, uh, I had, I'm here, just gonna, just everybody picking that someone did before the meeting, but. If he's out of the academy and on his own. Hold on, we got two cars running.
He had to go, did he? Was that, he had to leave?
Yeah, he had, he's on duty, so.
Oh.
Had something going.
All right, we move on to public works.
Uh, had a couple of water issues last Saturday and, and super problem on Saturday. Another water one popped up today and I just didn't take care of it all, so. Everything got fixed, as far as in.
Is it mostly roots and that type of thing or what?
The, one was, one was a hit from.
Oh, that's right. Michael.
And the other one was, yeah, was roots.
It was roots.
I don't know if you know this, I was thinking about this today, is Michael's taking out the old holes?
The ones that are not gonna use.
Yeah.
Are they basically done in town?
They got trans, there's still a transport.
Okay.
They must've got a big shipment of the, a bunch of trucks came back today, so, with like high load trucks. So they must be gonna start cutting it.
While we're on public works, several people have been asking, you guys brought it up the last council meeting. I've had a lot of people ask me about scrap metal day and what you guys have decided on that.
I vote no.
No. I have a different opinion, I vote yes, but.
Well, they have that spare metal collection.
I think the rules need to be put in place, and I don't know if the park shop is the best place for it, because there is no gate.
Yeah.
Man.
Uh.
Donna Calment stopped in the office today and told me there was some company. Um, that you can call them and they came and picked up like people's recliner that they were getting rid of and there was no fee for it. So she was gonna get me that phone number, so, uh, uh, what month did you guys do this in before? That's what I thought, so.
And we tried to plant, but the garage sale day is, is earlier this year.
May.
Uh, but you know, last year we tried to combine it pretty close, I think it was a week apart, like. We had the garage sale days and then the metal cleanup, it's kind of like a whole community cleanup.
That was about a whole county.
Yeah, everybody can.
Is what it was.
So will this company go door to door and pick up junk?
I don't, I don't know, I think that would be called.
Just drive.
She was gonna give me the phone number, she was, um, I don't know if you could say th- this day, I don't know how that works, but.
Because it used to be you could put the junk on the curb and somebody would drag by and just pick it up. And a lot of scavengers would just go out and pick up if they want.
Yeah.
So that's.
I did.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people do it.
Yeah, that's, if you have that kind of junk day, then it's not all dumped.
Yeah, but then who goes around and picks?
Right, but then you have to guarantee it's picked off the curb.
Yeah, who goes around and picks all that up?
Late, late.
It used to be volunteer.
It was this company did it.
I don't know.
That might be something.
So who, who, I'll get the phone number from Donna and I'll be more than happy to pass it on.
I'll, I'll give my, oh.
Okay.
And I mean, I, I mean, I.
But right now, I would say we're probably, it's getting too late for us to get one scheduled.
Probably not in June, we might have to push it back, but I mean, we talked about last year expanding it. And that's where I think it's been, cause it was supposed to be a community cleanup and, you know, like. Cause I reached out to tire companies last year and the, the, uh, citizens would have to pay, but it was three dollars a tire. Where now it's not sitting in somebody's yard, and so, um. I think it needs to be more secure and it needs to be better planned than what we did in the past, but I think just scrapping it because we. Have just an open facility, it's not the right thing to do either.
But I think the junk on the curb, if we got somebody who went and picked.
But then you have to guarantee people pick the junk off the curb when, no, no, but when nobody picks up your junk.
I think that was the fault, the volunteer fire department did it one year way back in the day, twenty or thirty years ago. Went around and picked up everybody's stuff and. I don't think we need to use them like that.
No, no, I wonder if this company, that's what I was.
For free?
I don't know.
Yeah, but Donna, maybe they, that they came to some people's house and picked up a recliner and something else and.
I don't know about free though, I mean, cause what are they benefiting off of it? Like at least the metal. They, they, they do it for free, they don't charge us because they're turning around and making money off of it. The tires, they're not making money off of it, so that's where they have to put the cost back on people. What money are you gonna get off of a recliner and that's disgusting.
Why are you gonna be putting scrap metal on the curb or that kind of? I'll just, we can give them a call every time they're doing it anymore. I've got a whole bunch of it.
No, I think they use it.
Scrap metal?
Just do a break the problem.
So you're gonna send a number to me?
First, see what scrap prices are first.
Oh, maybe the city can make some money.
Scraps never.
It doesn't make them.
Oh, is it?
It's always down.
It's down.
Okay.
So can you call that? You gotta call?
You might call.
You called the same company last year or something like that.
Donna, you have Donna's number, don't you, Molly?
I think I have.
Taylor, you want me to send?
Yes, yeah.
Any further questions, discussion with the fellow works? Moving on to communications.
We have a newsletter coming out and, um, Lori's already sent me her app, so the city has a.
What, is that gonna be for June, newsletter for June or July?
Well, as soon as we, May.
May?
We're not gonna mail it, we'll just put it on, post it.
Put it on the social media sites and.
I was gonna ask that, it's like, cause I know the last time I was sent with bills, but, but I don't get a bill down, so if it would, if it's possible to put it. We'll put it signal and. Don't stop us.
And then I, I had a Zoom meeting with the flood management people from the D N R. And I'll, I'll post that on the website when they finalize it, because we talked about what we could do on North Street by your. Down at the end of Bray Street.
The pond. And you converted it west.
And what to do at the lagoon to protect the lagoon, so. One that they've finished, it's called Real Time Technical Systems.
That was for like a hundred year flood though, right?
Hundred year, twenty five and ten. But they didn't factor in that we had a storm sewer system, so I was gonna send them whatever you sent me.
Soon as I can.
Well, don't worry, there's, yeah, they're not real quick either. They're not real quick either, I don't think, they're, they're not waiting on the edge of their seat.
Yeah.
As soon as you get something, just send it to me.
There's, uh, what's, uh, in the library, there's also, um, we were sent by the story of how we ate things on flooding and. Uh, other pamphlets, like everything on that kind of thing.
Right.
So then people always look at them and they're. Every library was set them, so.
Go ahead.
It's like that, they're in binders.
Nope, cool. That's it.
So, yeah. All right, uh, planning and zoning, Rosalie's not here, well, somebody else has something to plan and zoning?
No, we haven't been able to relate to. First days.
Yep. Uh, cemetery? Nothing.
Looks nice.
It does, it does look very nice, but as far as the. Cost initiatives, I've not had time to write down the, the proposal, you guys, I'll, I'll, sorry. Business has been pulling my day job.
My bad.
Move on to parks.
Um, I have a lot going on, the Opera Park has their first event that's happening this Saturday from four to seven. It's called Cambridge and New Moto Regan. So it sounds like it's been received well, um, there's a lot of people signed up and excited about it and. I forwarded David the, um. Portable restroom contact information that these cities so that they can get set down there for the event, so. That's right, that's moving around, and they are doing very well with, um, signups for memberships. It's doing good, it's taking care of itself and that's. At this point, we're at the end of the summer, so, which is great, it's great to hear, it's like us keeping the cleanup and got things put together, so.
You want to post it on Facebook?
I, I, yes, that would be fantastic, that was one of the questions that I.
Where's it at?
Um, this is on the four Facebook.
Okay, okay, I'm just gonna.
And, uh. My internet's not working very well, so I can only see part of it.
Okay, I'll just find it.
But yeah, if you look under the four Facebook page, David's related with.
I do have a question in regards to that, not to try to like throw them under the bus, maybe you don't know. David Fresco reached out to me about trash and like getting service down there. But then I told him, you know, to reach out to Susan if we have to set it up and stuff, never heard back, so I, I noticed that. When those are trash picked up Wednesday? Wednesday morning or Tuesday night, they pulled bins up from boardwork and put it at Fresco's house. So I wanna make sure that they have adequate, adequate, like you said, bathroom and trash facilities down there.
We need to talk trash.
So especially if they're gonna be doing events and stuff.
For sure.
They need to have trash down there.
For sure.
And they need to hook up with the city for, we then notify Incantation, do they want one bin, do they want two bins? Um, and an account would have to be set up for that to go out in, in billing.
Okay, I, I honestly think there was not the expectation of. People. Cause I kind of get the sense that there's a little bit of kind of catch up.
Yeah.
To get things, you know, um, which is, it's a really great thing.
Lots of it.
Um, you know, so, yeah, I.
Um, you know, so yeah, I hope they're holding them and have him get a hold of the.
Just especially with events and stuff down there and everything, like with the numbers really good, people expect.
I've figured out, I've been asking about, I mean, he just reached out to me about the restroom situation, because he knew I went through it, so, but I'll check in with, I mean.
Just, yeah.
It's an event, it's for air charging, for the racers, for the, coming in.
And especially since it's city property, if they don't have enough trash cans down there, that we got trash floating around.
Oh.
Not like that.
Yeah, 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 for sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome.
What's the actual name of the Facebook page? Because I'm not finding. I typed Cambridge.
Feel like it's Cambridge Offroad Park.
Uh, I pulled one up and nothing came up.
Cambridge Off-Dash-Road-Park Core, C-O-R-E.
Right here, Park Core. There you go, there it is.
Okay.
I go to click on it, we'll make it up.
You have to join to see anything.
I guess you're good.
I'm gonna be there. Hit a miss whether I get it.
I don't want a number here. I don't want a number to the trash, yeah.
He doesn't want dirty people to, it's kind of like a, you know. All right, any further discussion for parks?
I, I just have two quick questions, well, one question and one other statement. The newsletter that you're talking about, Mark, is that a monthly newsletter or?
We're trying to make it quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, and um, so you wanted to go May or? I'm just.
Just send me what you want.
Tickets of things about the park to you?
Yep.
Yeah, we're really good with deadlines. If I don't have a deadline.
You don't get.
I was putting off.
Well, we wanted to get it out.
Yeah, so, okay, so I'll.
Monday.
Okay. No, tomorrow, I know. The, 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 the.
Yeah.
Work is really, really busy for me right now, so I've kind of benched the other stuff, and I feel kind of that way about the board also, because we had only a few attendees. The signage part that we had talked earlier a year ago. I would like to revisit that coming in June, but work with Mike about the trail thing, so we haven't benched it, but I just don't have time. I know he doesn't have time, and then we kind of want to bring things together to then, I'm hoping by July, I guess.
That'd be great.
To just show some stuff and ideas, and now with this grant stuff, researching that too, what we can do, so that's as much of an update as I can.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And what a lovely update it was. Hey! Are we at that point where we're gonna comment about the mayor?
No, not yet.
Okay, you can honor.
So, that last N L A class, I went to three of them, and in number three, they talked about how towns should have an economic development committee. Well, we don't have that. We have me, and so somebody, I've already brought this up, that we talked about um, going to the businesses, meeting with the owners, just the, you know, any, if there was anything Cambridge could do to help them with their business. Right, yeah, so I ran into a couple of issues, um, I had surgery, and so that kind of stopped that for a minute, but then I ran into another thing, and I'm not sure if the meeting is really the place to bring. I ran into some stings.
Sure.
Let's just.
We'll put it to a work session then? Just add it to.
Of some businesses?
Agenda?
Well, that works, because we have that, we're a master.
We want to do a work session by the end of the month? Did we discuss that?
Uh. That'd be all right, I think I can.
At the end is.
But. That's next month at all for.
We got graduate.
And you got Memorial, Memorial.
Memorial, the, I said early June.
We have to be early June.
Because they got like.
June Thursday, this is the day.
Mondays.
Doesn't have to be.
Mondays.
Other than celebrations, because I have to work Monday nights.
Um.
But any other, yeah, same? Any other weekend that works for me?
That's it.
Thursdays are the going.
Yep, that's been June. Yes, sir.
Do we meet during the day? Will everybody be? I got a full time job again, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, congratulations. Thanks, back to the working world.
Well, she wants to meet in May, the last weekend in May, would you say to show you on Wednesday? Wednesday?
Caesar, Greg, you know.
Like the twenty ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Is it Wednesday, May?
Okay.
I can't meet before eighteen hundred.
Which time is that?
Six.
And I don't know that I'm gonna, I have to take some time off or I'm gonna lose some vacation time. I don't have.
And.
I mean, you guys could, somebody else can take minutes.
June fifth or?
Somebody else can take a minute.
Yeah, the twenty ninth or the fifth or for me.
So what, which is it?
June fifth. Susan wants to take some time off.
Okay. Zero five, June what time? I can't.
Eighteen hundred. I won't be here till six, I can't be here.
Yeah, I can't meet here.
Who's six thirty?
I won't, I can't.
Six thirty.
Yeah.
When are you gonna, what was the date?
It was Wednesday, so.
Yeah, yeah, Wednesday.
February last, January, December, I was seeing.
Six thirty.
Put a thing out in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, sir.
Six thirty?
Yep. Is there any further discussion for finance or economic developments?
That's all I have.
And we will move on to mayor council comments. What do you got, Mom?
Um. Did story construction pull permits for the work you're doing at the school?
Uh, it's not for us. Should be.
Oh, yeah.
I've never seen anything.
No.
That's what they, no.
They came, story construction came and asked for wa- where water lines and stuff were, but they did not pull any permits, and we don't want to run into the same kind of problems that we've run into with not having permits.
Well, I don't know that they need, well, they probably need permits for those great big temporary classrooms, but they sure as hell aren't gonna need permits to do the kind of renovation to the HVAC system that they're planning after.
Yeah, they need to get.
I don't know how, I.
The only reason I would know this is that
buildings take. But the people.
Same buildings.
Are operating auto apartments very badly. So, Emily said, and she goes, ah, Dan, I don't think there's any permits. Do we need to head knock somebody and say, hey?
I was saying. Because we don't want to get into this, we're two, three years from now, when someone's like, where are the permits for this?
Well, how long are those gonna be there? A year? When they're gonna remove them?
Uh, all the competitors will be attending classes in those temporary buildings all next year.
Good, and then they're gonna be removed after that?
And then they will be removed and the rock will be taken out of the green.
I'm kind of curious, I was curious how they, how they dammed up the waterway going through there, on how D N R did say dang it. The dam is what it is.
It, it. I think what they will say is it's two inch gravel and it's permeable. And eventually it will be, but it will form quite a pond on the west side of it.
Hmm.
I don't know, I don't know, yeah, I'm just.
Who, who was the engineer, whoever?
Chris Horns.
That laid that whole deal out?
I think it's the, it's Chris Horns and, and story county, I don't know, I mean, it's restoring construction.
Who was, who was the guy from story construction that came and asked for mapping of the water lines and stuff? I, I don't understand. I'll, I'll shoot it.
All right, come for it. I, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to bite the hand that feeds me, but.
You already did. You did, it's been recorded.
Yeah, well, I think it's the right thing to do, don't you?
Absolutely.
And I don't want like, I don't want the people I work for to get killed because they didn't acquire permits to get cool with the city that they're operating on. I want us to maintain a really good relationship between schools and communities, and that means following rules.
Well, in bigger picture too, you can't be upset that like Heartland didn't pull permits, but then we're gonna let the school do whatever they want.
Right.
Or, you know, a homeowner not pull permits and build an unsafe structure. Wait, so it's just, it's gotta be fair across the board, there's rules in place for a reason.
So I will kind of figure out on my end of the chain of command at the school, who I need to put up. Last day of school, the students is gonna be the thirty first of May.
Wow. Two weeks.
Sure.
It's just like I need to.
I'm just trying to get a two per day man.
Right.
I just.
Was there any further discussion on making a third stop over here? Did you ever hear any more about that?
Uh, yeah, Nate is working on it. Um, I think he wants to wait until he gets a better idea who's coming in the school district, it's been quite an influx of folks moving into the district, maybe not in Cambridge, but.
Excellent.
Well, and even rural, rural, and it's been a humongous pain in the backside using that bridge.
Oh, I can't.
Giant on this.
Yeah. Wait till two ten shuts.
Uh, definitely. It will shut down until this next one, I know the right.
Right.
Or so they say.
So.
Twenty twenty-five, that's when it's supposed to.
Yeah, I mean, we have.
For that close to ten.
And you're considered.
You know, there's not, yeah, I mean.
Right.
Hopefully it's not gonna take it long, it's all hard, but.
Hope it's still not done.
No, it's done. No, they still have two onramps.